It's international residential code, okay? Or the contractor. It's your responsibility to follow the building code. It's not our responsibility to go keep checking up on you. Where your -- it's, there's all, when you get the permit, there's a review, there is a step-by-step when the inspection process has to happen and everything else. But you call us. We don't know where you are. And again, we don't have the, we don't have the capability.
And there's always the people that don't ever pull anything. I understand that. But I, I would think if you could collect money for, by doing a follow-up, then it's worth it.
I would, I would.
So I would say we could look at it again.
If fees are possible, again, I'm only saying from what Joe Cassidy has issued.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
All right. Item number eight. Discussion, take possible action regarding fire marshal inter-local mutual assistance agreements. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to table. Motion by Stefan, second by Anne Marie. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes six to zero. Okay. Item number nine. Discussion, take possible action regarding firefighter tax abatement. We have two of those in front of us. And in the back of the room, we have the Chair of the Board of Fire Commissioners. Should we have any questions? Okay. So let's start with Citizens Engine. All right. So at this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Seymour Fire Department Tax Abatement Report for 2018 for Citizens Engine as presented by the Fire Chiefs. Motion by Anne Marie, second by Trish. Under discussion. If they have any questions?
So Kurt, what's the, what's the point system based on again? Just like I --
Mr. Chairman?
Context.
The point system is based upon --
My mother will yell.
The point system is based on years of service, number of fire calls made, number of meetings, number of drills, how active you are, and accumulation of points, and it's totaled at the end of the year.
So you have an allotment for each activity you've described?
Yes, correct.
One point, three points, five points?
Years of service.
Whatever.
Correct. Also, if you're an officer in the company, or a Commissioner, or a Fire Chief, there's additional points for those particular positions.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Any other questions? Just while we have Clay up here. He's got a bad knee, so I don't want him to go back and forth.
Those are good.
Excellent. Thank you, Clay.
They're new.
All right. If there are no other questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes six to zero. Okay. Next would be the Seymour Fire Department Tax Abatement for 2018 for Great Hill Hose Company. Motion by Al, second by Trish. Under discussion. Any comments, questions? Okay. Hearing done. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes six to zero. Okay. Next would be the Seymour Fire Department Tax Abatement for 2018 for Great Hill Hose Company. Motion by Al, second by Trish. Under discussion. Any comments, questions? Okay. Hearing done. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes five to zero one. And please note Anne Marie's abstention. Okay. Item number 10. Discussion, take possible action regarding EMS tax abatement. In your packet, we have the tax abatement for Seymour Ambulance for 2018. Again, they use the same point-type system as the Fire Department does, obviously a little bit different. And this was presented by Kyle Kelly, who is the President Executive Director of Seymour Ambulance. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Seymour Ambulance Tax Abatement recipients for 2018 as presented. Motion by Anne Marie, second by Trish. Is there any discussion? Hearing done. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. The Chair votes aye, motion passes six to zero. Okay. Item number 11. Discussion, take possible action regarding capital plan. Okay. So after a lot of work and effort, and again, please ignore the top three lines, the road reconstruction, building repair, and mill rate stabilization, we're not voting on those. Those are just part of the spreadsheet for organization's sake. But I've whittled the capital report, or the capital plan, excuse me, down to $301,815. So we're $1,815 over budget, which is not an issue. We will be able to absorb that, so there's no problems. So this is technically what I have in place. Again, the Board of Finance determines if there will be money available, so they put the $300,000 aside, and then we decide how we're actually going to spend that $300,000. So here's where we are. Just working through, again, we've talked about some of these, but I'll just go back through them. The Finance Department software is, you know, we've talked about combining the Board of Education and the Board, or the Municipal Finance Departments into one. While that may not be feasible, at least initially, I think it's important that we have everybody on the same finance software. We have two different versions currently running, so they don't communicate as well. So we think that's important. Plus, they both have older versions, so it's time. We think that number's going to be somewhere a little over $100,000, so we'll budget that out over four years. The hotbox reclamer for Public Works, as you know, we already purchased one of those last year. That's going very well. That allows Public Works to make hot asphalt year-round, so no longer do we have to put down coal patch. I mean, we still have to use coal patch from time to time, but this allows us to make hot asphalt, so it's going to, over the long run, save us a tremendous amount of money. The truck mobile lift system, that would be an additional lift in the Public Works garage, which is needed. And then a scale with EZ Pass system, that is at the transfer station. Again, this would save a tremendous amount of work. The truck would go over the scale, EZ Pass would pick it, it would send it back to the computer program, and then it would be easier to track things. Again, that's an $80,000 purchase. We do need a new scale, so it's a matter of, do we want to pay, and I believe the number's $50,000 for just the scale, or $80,000 to have the whole package? Obviously, it makes sense to spend the extra $30,000 to have the whole package, so it's done right and efficiently over the wrong, long-term. Public Works, I think we can all agree, is doing a fantastic job just with their work that they're producing, but more importantly, the data that is coming back that Tony provides. I think the more tools that we can give him to improve that is, is that much better. I think he does a fantastic job with that. Mobile radios. The Fire Department kind of, in the, in the 12th hour, dropped a $500,000 bomb on us, saying that the radios were in need of upgrading, and there was some concern. They originally wanted to get the entire $500,000, or the $500,000 purchase in one shot, which would have broken down to about $117,000 a year, which just would not fit. I had some philosophical discussions with the Chief as to why, and no offense, Mr. Chairman, but why are the firemen constantly waiting until the last possible second to drop these bombs on us, kind of like they did with the air tanks? We had to go through that fiasco. That's now been rectified. Those air tanks, they're purchasing, I believe, 10 every year, so there's not going to be problems. So I said, why are radios and things like that any different? Do you guys need radios? They're constantly being, changing, upgrading, everything else. So this $40,000 essentially, we're going to commit to every year in the capital plan to allow them to constantly be upgrading their radios. So that is something that he feels will work. Community services. Mary's given us a report, a few of them. We know how well community services is growing. They get a lot of trips. The bus itself is getting a little tired. It's older now. So what she is asking for is actually a new, bigger bus, one with better ADA compliance, bathroom and things. We have a driver now, Wes, who drives the bus, who is certified to drive big buses, so this is not going to be a problem for him to handle, and it's going to allow us to expand what we're offering. We're still going to keep the old bus as well, so there's no plans to get rid of it. One of the things we use the bus for, as crazy as it sounds, is during summer camp, to drive the kids back and forth from Bungay School to the high school to swim. Saves us thousands of dollars each year by not having to get a bus every day. So we'll use that bus for smaller trips, things like that, and we'll use the bigger bus for kind of the bigger, bigger ticket items.
Has maintenance been included in the budget for the older bus that you're going to have to spend some money on to keep up?
Yes.
Okay.
Good question. Generators. We have $20,000 in, as a placeholder, right now, the generator that we have for Town Hall is starting to fail. We just put a $1,500 part into it to keep it going. And again, the generator, let's not forget, we got that four or five years ago. We got at auction from the city of Orange, or Town of Orange. Orange didn't want it anymore. We scooped in, we got a cheap, you know, it served its purpose, but now it's time to upgrade. We are also looking at a new generator, not only just for Town Hall, but also a bigger generator, one that will take care of the entire complex. So that's us, Citizens Engine, and Seymour Ambulance. The issue, number one, is the size and cost of a generator that size to run that much stuff. Number two, and Clay explained this to me, what we want to do is we have natural gas right at the street, and you notice, we did not pave the alleyway when we did the paving, because we're going to run the line up from the street, run it right into the new generator, and we'll never have to worry about that again. Unfortunately, we can't do that with the fire station, because it is a, what is it, Clay?
Place of Refuge.
Place of Refuge. So it would need to have its own diesel-type thing. So we're deciding kind of how we're going to, to handle that. They're in need of a generator, so maybe it's a smaller one that runs Town Hall, and then something bigger on its own diesel that powers the fire station and Seymour Ambulance. So we're just looking on that, working on that. This $20,000, though, is roughly the cost of what it would be for a brand-new generator just for Town Hall. Oil tank removal, we put $10,000 aside in a sinking fund to address any costs of removing oil tanks out of the ground. Just wanted to make sure that was good. And then, as we mentioned, three elevators, community center, Town Hall, and library. All three elevators are on their last legs. We're to the point now where we're going to have to replace them all. The three elevators total cost is $250,000, so we're going to spread that out over the five years of $50,000 a year. The thing to keep in mind is, you know, we've had some talk about what we're going to do with the community center, so that would weigh into the final amount of all this, if we were to keep the community center, if we look at other options, different things like that. The, flip to page two. PC replacements, again, we purchase about $5,000 a year in new PCs, and we cycle those throughout the town. Rob Dyer has a PC replacement schedule that's been created. That's what we follow each year. And then, a new wireless system for the down, for down in this area. So Town Hall, I believe it will reach over to the fire station and Seymour Ambulance, if I'm not mistaken. And again, there's two levels. There's the secure level, which is upstairs, then the public level, which is, which is downstairs. So, so that's $301,815. So again, all I'm going to ask tonight is just for tentative approval that you are okay with what is on the sheet as it currently stands. We don't make the final vote on capital until after the budget is actually passed, so that'll be some point in May or June. But if you're okay with what is here, then that at least gives me a better idea, and I can kind of put this to the side, and then we revisit it after the budget passes. If there's issues now, then we can kind of talk about those and, and go through them. So what is, comments or questions?
Kurt, you've probably done this before, but can you go over just the basics of the mill rate stabilization fund, and I know it's a huge benefit to the town. Can you just explain the nuts and bolts of that briefly?
Mill rate stabilization fund was put in initially, I believe it was five years ago, when we had a large drop in debt service. And we had a large drop that was only going to last, projected for about a year or so. And what we didn't want was the mill rate to come down, and then the mill rate to immediately go back up the next year. So we put the mill rate stabilization account in to give us the ability to try to keep that mill rate level. Fortunately, after that year, we've been able to, to do that without any issue. This is money that's been available for, whether it be contingency-type items, it's helped go raise the fund balance, which is important. It's also been used to put some money into our OPEB trust. So it's kind of a mixture of things. The number's getting smaller and smaller. That number, I believe, will be $45,000 this year, if I'm remembering my budget correctly off the top of my head.
Are you happy with that, or you, did you have an issue with that?
An issue with?
The 45?
I think we should get to the point where the mill rate stabilization account is zero. So again, it was designed to kind of, the ebb and flow of the budget, we were trying to, instead of having them go up and down, trying to keep it more like that. We've kind of gotten to that point now?
Yeah.
So I don't think the mill rate stabilization fund is as important as it was the last couple of years. I mean, the two that are more important are the road reconstruction and the building repair fund. We need to be proactive with that stuff. You know, the $100,000 for the building repair fund, that is helpful. The $200,000 for road reconstruction, that probably equates to about 50 feet of a new road. So that's one that we cannot live on, road reconstruction. We need to get that number up to at least a million, I think, to be effectively proactive with roads. I think we're more going to have to talk, looking at other debt issues or grants or things like that as we move forward.
I thought that was a little low. Okay.
So Kurt, when do you plan on the mill rate stabilization fund to get to zero? Like, if you look at it from a forecast standpoint, the budget?
I would expect fiscal year '21.
And then you'd be able to maybe move that to the road? I mean, is that something that can?
We could. We can move it to, yeah, wherever.
Okay. So it's movable to whatever you want to put it to.
Part of me was actually contemplating removing it this year, moving it to capital. Because if you go, again, go back to page two, if you look to some of the outlying years, I mean fiscal year '21, '22, you know, there's some bigger numbers, so we're either going to have to put more money into capital, or kind of take some of the things off the plate. And then, you know, if you look out to '23, '24, oh, and there's a typo there, it should be '25, not '23. You know, those numbers are still lower, but it's only the big stuff that's slotted in. Yet a lot of the smaller projects haven't gotten there just yet, because, you know, five years out is still a little bit too far for some of the smaller departments to really be thinking.
Yeah, I was just thinking about it from, if you wanted to get that, to that road reconstruction a little bit higher, a little quicker pace, that's all.
You know, I think at some point, we're going to have to, just as a community, make a, a decision. You know, maybe bite the bullet and just put extra money into it, and just flat-out say, hey, this, you know, for the next, and I'm just going to make something up, for the next three years, that we're going to increase the mill rate by .5, you know, half a mil, each year, which equates to about $525,000 or so, and put that money right into the, into the fund. So is everybody at least good at what, with what the list is? Is there anything anybody thinks is omitted that they've heard departments talk about? Any, and again, I don't know if this has come out the wrong way, but any projects that anyone has specific interest in, that we think should be discussed or talked about that's not on here? Yeah, this is recommendations from the department heads, and then also myself, Doug, Tony, and Rory get together and add things as well.
When we get rid of the mill rate stabilization fund, are we going to be adding for OPEB?
OPEB is, it's been in the last two years, so we're, we're good. We have, we have $50,000 in on its own, and then the strategic plan, and again, I don't, off the top of my head, there's a certain percentage of surplus every year that would go to OPEB as well.
Right. Okay.
On that note, my continuing belief is that we should be adding more to OPEB, but I think I've said that many times in public.
Yeah, and I, I don't disagree with that at all. It's just such an abstract concept for the average resident to understand why we have to raise the mill rate for now something that's well with. The changes that they've made to the accounting standards, our OPEB liability's actually increased. So we're into the $40 million range now. So it's hard to, I guess, just break it down for the average person. It's not an accountant doesn't necessarily understand, you know, why we're putting money aside for money that is never going to be used with. You know, the road fund, the fund balance, those are things they can see, they can touch, they understand. OPEB, they just, they can't understand. But it, it's extremely important, and money, we need to be putting more money into this, because while it may not benefit us, now we may not be able to see that, but if we're diligent, we do what we're supposed to be doing, 20, 30 years down the road, that's when they'll be able to really utilize that money, and we'll benefit the town, so.
Yeah, I, I don't think they'll never use it. I think we're just waiting for the ball to drop, and you want to have some preparation to make it less painful for when that happens.
Right, but the problem is--
I'm not saying it's happening in the next five years. We don't know. I, I don't mean to insinuate that, but--
Well, it would just wouldn't be anything sustainable. That's the problem.
Understood.
You know, if in the next, if that does, and I agree with you, I mean, there's going to be some rough times coming. I think, again, at that point, we're just going to have to bite the bullet and address it head-on. Listen, depending on what happens tomorrow, who knows? When Governor comes out and says, hey, the towns and cities are responsible for X amount of, and Stefan and I were talking about this before, X amount of the teachers' retirement, you'd be talking millions of dollars. The towns, each town, I mean, the last time, it was, you know, close to a million dollars for the Town of Seymour?
There's no way towns--
So, I don't know what, what they're going to do. And at some point, take all the politics aside, at some point, they have to rip the Band-Aids and just fix all these structural problems, and that's going to be very uncomfortable for a lot of people.
Yeah, and I agree with you there, but on that same note, we don't want to put the town in this kind of position of systematical underfunding, or systematic underfunding that the state has been in, which is why I continue to advocate for putting more money into OPEB.
Well, the difference, you know, we actually fund our stuff. You know, it's, we, we're kind of a pay-as-we-go system. You know, we, we make our pension payments as required by the state of Connecticut, which is ironic that the towns and cities make their payments, and they're actually going up between two and a, between two and two and a half percent over the next three years. So the cost of a police officer pension payment is 19.55%. That's how much we pay into the MERS plan every year, per police officer, which is absolutely insane. For our retirees, we actually, it's pay-as-we-go, so we get a, a bill every year from Anthem, Signa, whoever we're with, and that's the bill that we, we pay, whereas the state does what the, the state does. So, I mean, we're in a little, I mean, Stefan, your point is well-taken. I'm not making light of it. It's just that we're in better position, because we're actually putting money in like we're supposed to. But if we can build this OPEB trust up to a point where it's producing enough interest, now we can start to reduce those, you know, million, $2 million payments, offset by the interest, so. It, it's very important. I agree with you. So. But again, I've asked Rich, and I'll say this publicly, because quite honestly, I don't care, to look into ways to get the Town of Seymour out of the municipal employers' retirement system. I think it's absolutely insane, the amount of money that we have to put in to fund retirement for people. I'm not saying that our people don't deserve good retirements. I'm not saying that our people don't deserve what they get. That's nothing. But 19.55% for a person that's been, you know, 15 years in the pension industry, it's insane. That is so much money that goes to that. And again, it's a broken system that the state of Connecticut refuses to fix. And until they fix it, I don't understand why the towns and cities are stuck footing a bill, and we're essentially hostage. We can't, we can't really get out of this. You know, there's a state system, and there's a municipal system. The state's system has been changed multiple times. There's multiple tiers. The municipal system is still on the original tier. And every year through CCM, we go up, and we put language in front of the Labor Committee, and every year, it gets laughed out of committee, it doesn't even get a public hearing. So it, it's, it's just absolutely insane. If we had our own defined benefit plan, we would be paying substantially less to provide the exact same benefit. And the biggest issue, and I, I'm not going to knock police officers, because that's the system that they're in, but you spend the first three or four years of your career working a ton of overtime, making $120,000, $130,000, $140,000 a year. Those are your three highest years. That's what your pension is based on. You could spend the next 25 years just working your regular shift. And again, those pension payments that we're making, that 19.55%, is based on your salary that year.
What vice versa, I can back away from that gentleman.
Yeah. So, I mean, it's, it's a broken system that if they refuse to fix it, then we need to explore options that could be available to us, because I just think we're not representing the residents of the Town of Seymour if we just continue to be dictated to by the state of Connecticut. So that's my, I'll get off my soapbox now, as I'm getting that look from Rich. Bless you. Any other questions, comments? All right, so again, I'm not, since there's, I'm not going to ask for an official vote, but again, if everybody's good, then we're just going to kind of put this aside for the time being. If any, you know, in your conversations over the next two or three months, as you're involved with the different boards, if you're talking to people, if, if someone raises an issue, if you see something else that you think might be worthwhile, then, you know, let me know. We can make those changes, but let's plan to approve this the first meeting in June, assuming the budget passes the first time with no issue. That good for you, Attorney Patrulla? Okey-dokey. Thank you very much. All right. Item number 12. Discussion and take possible action regarding surplusing fire vehicles. Not vehi, it should be vehicles. Just one vehicle. Okay. All right, so we have a couple letters. So let's go with the letter. It will start dated February 2nd, 2019, and then we'll kind of, we'll go from there. As you know, we got a new engine for Citizens Engine, and one of the things that was requested when the Fire Commissioner sent their letter and they have the vehicle surplus, was potentially for them to have the ability to send this truck to another community that was in need, you know, storms and, and different things. So in your packet, you have a, a letter that says, "The Board of Commissioners and Chiefs have found a fire department in Maine that needs a fire engine. We need your approval to donate the engine that the town surplus. We will contact this department to make arrangements for transfer to them after your approval and obtaining any paperwork required for this donation. At time of transfer, we will set up a press release and photos for newspaper if needed required for transfer. And the fire department is Salem Volunteer Fire Association in Freeman Township, Maine." And it's signed by Clayton Jurgens, the Chairman of the Board of Fire Commissioners, and he is in the back. So does anybody have any questions or concerns? Again, we, we talked about this a little bit, asked them to do the research, they've done that. There is no other use in the Town of Seymour for this, this piece of equipment. So with that, I'll entertain a motion. Maybe I won't entertain a motion just yet.
I just want to remind the Board of Section 2-285 and 2-286 of the Seymour Town Code, which deals with surplus town property. And I don't know if this piece of equipment went through this process or not.
It should have, yes. Yes, both Rory and Clay are nodding their heads just to me. Yeah, posted on board. We got the letter. We took public action on the letter. It was posted on the bulletin board. On the bulletin board. Not anyone, the bulletin board. So, so that's, we've met everything. Yes, Rich?
Right.
Okay. No, no, good. Okay. Okay, so then I'll entertain a motion that the Town of Seymour approve the recommendation of the Board, Boards of Fire Commissioners and Fire Chiefs, and donate our surplus fire engine to the Salem Volunteer Fire-- Fire Association of Freeman Township, Maine, as suggested. Motion by Stephon, second by, was that you, Bob? Second by Bob. Is there any discussion? Clay, anything you want to add? Since your knee's feeling good, well, now let you walk back and forth.
We did some investigating just, and one of the guys that's, that's over next door has been going up to Maine, and he went up to their, they're using a 1977 GMC truck. They do about 50 to 60 calls a year. There's like 20 members, and they're really hurting for an engine. So we kind of talked to them, and they were more than happy. They're coming down. They're going, they want it. So we brought it back to you. We talked to them, and they, they can't wait. They are very happy that we are able to do this.
How far up in Maine are they?
About six hours from here.
They're northwest of Waterville.
Oh, yeah.
Up in the county. Or that's not even the county yet, is it?
Parallel with Orinon. Yeah. Off 95.
All right, any questions for Clay while we have him?
I know, I knew somebody from there. Small old town. They're going to love that engine. A little town like that. That's good stuff. Yeah. So they're coming to get it, obviously.
Last I heard, there was four individuals coming down. Originally, they were coming down by train. Now I understand they're, they're getting a ride from somebody who's visiting up there, but they're, four people are coming down to get it, and they're driving it home.
Do a shift home. Good.
We needed approval here before we said, come get it.
Yes, sir.
Does anybody want to drive a fire truck one last time before it goes?
No.
That's right. Think of the D image.
Stephon wants to blow the horn.
Because I would love to. You kidding me? I would love to try to drive one once. Probably hit everything in sight, but. Yeah, no, there'd be a few new dents in the truck. So. All right, well, if there's no questions, comments, thoughts, all in favor? Opposed, abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Don't go anywhere because now we have the other truck, just in case.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome, just in case anybody has a question. Okay, also, we have a letter dated February 12, 2019, to the Board of Selectmen. "The Board of Commissioners and Board of Chiefs have surplus the following vehicle: 2006 Ford Expedition." You can see the VIN number and the mileage. "The vehicle has a blown motor. It's a second motor. Mechanic has recommended not replacing engine due to age condition of vehicle." So again, this is that original step where they are surplusing the vehicle. So we will follow the procedures that Rich outlined. If no one wants the vehicle, at that point, we can make a decision as to what ultimately will be done with it. So. Clay, anything you want to add on that one? Or anybody have any questions on that, Ray Clay? No? Okay. So that'll entertain a motion that the Board of Selectmen, per the request of the Board of Commissioners and Board of Chiefs, surplus the 2016 Ford Expedition, 2006, whoo, 2016, oh boy, 2006, excuse me, Ford Expedition as presented. Motion by Trish, second by Stephon. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstained? The chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Thank you very much. All right, moving on to item number 13. Discussion and take possible action regarding ordinances. So there's five to discuss. So I'll give an update on ordinance A and ordinance B. Those are the two that were before the ordinance committee today. We met at 5:30. So A is the Retired Emergency Service Tax Abatement. That is one, if you recall, will allow us to provide, continue to provide tax abatements to folks that have put in 25 years of service, are age 65, and have retired. The Board is still working on that. We actually spoke with, with Clay. We want the fire commissioners and the fire chiefs to weigh in to give us some type of criteria for that. We want it to be something a little bit more than just 25 years or just, and just age 65. We want them to still have some type of community involvement, whether it be helping at the pancake breakfast or, or something along those lines. So Clay is committed to get us just some rough ideas back for our meeting in two weeks. And at that point, we'll meet, and then we'll put it back on the agenda for the Board to discuss in a little bit more detail, and then perhaps at a public hearing to get some input from the residents. And then B, which is Section 15-3C, Manufacturers' Exemption. This was put together by the tax collector, the tax assessor, and attorney Patula. The Board has no issue with this as it stands. We would like to have this sent to public hearing for March 5, unless anyone has any objections.
I'm not sure I understand.
Sorry.
I don't understand what he said most of the time.
Well, that was appropriate. So. Amari, Stephon, do you want to weigh in on either of these or no? You guys are good? No? Okay. All right, so then I'll entertain a motion to send to a public hearing to be held on Tuesday, March 5, at 6:30 PM in the Norma Drummer Room, the Section 15-13C of the Seymour Town Code for Manufacturers' Exemption as presented. Motion by Stephon, second by, what's Trish? Second by Trish. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Okay, C, D, and E, those are the three that we've been working on for, for some time. We had public hearing this evening, and just want to go back to that. We had two speakers, Marion O'Keefe and Peter Raza. Both spoke in favor of the historic land, landmark preservation. Obviously, Marion was the one who originally brought it to us. So we, you know, we thank her again for her diligence and her passion. And then, you know, Peter brought up the point about preserving the lime kilns and not just those, but some of the other more historic structures, which I think might be outside of the scope of this ordinance, but not to say that that's not something that we shouldn't be looking at down the road. And that's something the Board can take into, take into account. So let's go through these one at a time because I know some of you might want to add to some of the ordinances, and we can, we can do that. So, Rich, the motion would be to approve the ordinance, and then it starts the 21-day clock?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, we have to wait five-
Yeah, we cannot vote on these ordinances tonight.
That's right.
You want to vote on them at your next meeting because under the charter-
That's right, it's five days.
Yeah. The public hearing has to be at least five days before the vote. So you had your public hearing tonight. You'll vote on it at your next meeting on the three of them.
Okay. Keep that in your hand.
Yes.
Thank you. So, okay, so historical landmark preservation. I'll entertain a motion that we move this forward as presented to the March 5 meeting for final approval. Is that redundant? Or do we just move it forward to March 5 and vote on it?
I don't think you need a motion to put it on your next agenda and-
All right, so historic landmark preservation. Any issues, questions? Well, everybody's good? No, we're going to leave-
I don't, you're going to leave it alone for the time being to get this on the books. You've gone through this whole process. Because if you make a big substantive change now, you're going to basically have to go back. You're going to have to do another hearing. You're going to go through this. You might as well get this on the books now and protect the 40 homes that were identified. Yeah, and then we'll look at the other thing. Just a random thought as I was sitting here thinking about this. I think Peter mentioned the state archaeologist. It's one of those things where I might want to take a look at some state statutes. There may be some protections out there. I'm not aware of any local ordinance that would protect, say, for example, stone walls on somebody's property because they were built in the 1600s or 1700s or 1800s. You know, fortunately, the major structure that he identified is owned by the town.
Yeah, it's untapped property.
You can do something with that.
Does it even fit the definition of a structure?
Not sure.
Right.
I'm not sure.
Check into that, right?
But you can protect it. I mean, you're the landowner.
Right, right. We could do whatever we want.
Post it, put a sign up, you know, have Public Works clear it, debris, make sure it's, have somebody take a look at it. That's your choice on that. You don't need an ordinance.
Right.
You're the landowner.
Yeah. I think he's looking for other private ones, and I'm just not sure how we-
And I have seen development projects in other municipalities where the state archaeologist has been brought in to document certain things. There was an area in Milford where Revolutionary War soldiers were offloaded. You know, I've seen reports, planning and zoning, and other agencies have required archaeological reviews of certain sensitive parcels from time to time. I've seen things like that done before, but I haven't seen wholesale ordinances trying to protect, what else are there, non-structures, if you will, of some archaeological or historical significance. So that would cause me to go back and look at the state statutes and see what protections, if any, are afforded those types of historical artifacts under current state law. And see if there's a state statute that would authorize a municipality to act pursuant to it. In the absence of a statute authorizing us to do something you can't do it, you wouldn't have the general power.
I did have one question for you with regard to the ordinance. There was a, there's a section where in the permit required Section 4, it's that, it states, "If the age of the building or structure is unknown, not indicated, or in dispute, it shall be assumed to be at least 150 years old for the purpose of this chapter." So now when we start talking about structure, we got to probably, they kind of interlace. They play against each other. So we want to make sure that we have that. I mean, I think I understand what that's trying to state, but if now if we open up the definition of structure, it may, from a home-
I don't recommend making any changes to this at this time in a substantive way. We're allowed to, we were going through this trying to clean up some typos and little grammatical things today. I think we caught most of them in the latest draft, but we may have spotted a few more. Rory, is this the last, the one we sent up later this afternoon? No, okay. So we're allowed under, you know, to make certain little minor changes and not have to go back to a public hearing.
So, but to Bob's point.
Yeah, so, yeah, I might even agree with that, and that's fine because I would wonder what we wouldn't have indicated, what would fall underneath that particular, unknown, not indicated, or in dispute. But then if we open up structure, and we say structures more than a home or something like that, then we have to make sure that that-
Oh, great. Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, that's why I'm sensitive to everything that was said tonight, and I appreciate historical significance. I was a history major, you know, I enjoyed very much listening to them. But the lawyer part of me says we have to go back and see what, if anything, we're allowed to do under state statute.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so anything else on that one? Everybody comfortable? Okay, so that takes care of that one. All right, next, we'll do D, which is Communications Commission. I think this is the one that everybody was, I don't think anybody had any questions or comments on, but any last, and again, a perfect example for this communications, Public Safety Communications Committee. Are the radios being purchased by the fire department? We want to make sure that police is using the same radios, that the fire department is, that EMS is, and right now, that's, I don't know if that's necessarily the case because everybody's just kind of doing their own thing. So this will at least get all the chiefs or their designees in a room to have these type of discussions. I think would help them plan out a little bit better as well, that these things are coming and needed down the road. So. Again, any questions on this one?
Yeah, it's a good idea.
All right, perfect. And then the last one, the Emergency Management Director. Again, we took the old ordinance, the old civil defense ordinance, and any place where it said civil defense, we changed to Director of Emergency Management or Emergency Management. Bob, I know you sent me two emails just with regards to some job description or duties, I should say. So, Rich, if, if we add duties to the Emergency Management Director position, should that be their actual job description, or should that be part of the ordinance?
I'm looking at, I want to make sure I'm talking about the right document. Rory, if I may.
You're good on this one, all right?
There were some changes made between our office and Rory. I just want to make sure.
Oh, if they're, if they were just sent over today, then we wouldn't have.
So let me say this. The ordinance in the agenda packet, is that the one we're talking about that you're looking at?
Yes. Rory, did you encompass any of what Bob said in those? No, okay. Right.
So I don't know what changes Bob is looking to make, but the Director's powers and duties are broad enough, I think, to encompass any specific type of emergency management that the chief executive officer may assign to the Director. Because you have a catch-all in here in 2-112E, "The Director of Emergency Management will perform such other civil preparedness-related functions as may, from time to time, be assigned to him by the chief executive of the town." So in answer to your question, you could have a job description that is broader, or more specific, rather, than the broad language included in your enabling ordinance.
Okay, and we could change that as-
You can change your job description, yes.
Without touching the order.
Yes, exactly.
And that's good.
Because you have that catch-all in there. And there's other language in here that's pretty, "The Director of Emergency Management will coordinate the activities of all civil preparedness agency forces, both full-time, part-time, be responsible for," and it goes on. So that's all like broad standards, if you will, almost all-encompassing. And your job description may, in fact, be much more specific. Okay.
Yeah, no, good, yeah, good point. So Rory, can we, once the ordinance passes, we can redo the job description. Maybe it's something we can do with Chris when he gets here. And we can add these things from the email from Saturday from Bob. Excellent. Okay, so everybody's good with the three, Historical Landmark, Communications, and Emergency Management Director. So we'll put those on the agenda for our meeting on the 5th and go from there. Monica, you getting all this? Sorry, it's a little- Sorry, it's a little... That's right. We're giving you a workout tonight. All set?
Yes.
Anything to add, or no?
No, we're talking about some of the charter changes that were done, so the full text doesn't have to be published, which was pretty cost prohibitive. Not cost prohibitive, but it was a costly, it could be costly, your bigger ordinances, your...
The Historic Landmark one will cost...
Exactly. So that's one of the things we were just talking about.
Yeah, remember the adult one?
Yes, that was, that was quite a long ordinance.
Yeah. How much? Eight thousand. The adult ordinance one?
The adult...
No, strip joints and the such? Yeah. So, eight thousand bucks, and we have, we have none of those. That's the crazy thing, so. Alright, moving on. Item number 14, appointments. We have three appointments this evening. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to, oh, actually, one typo. The name is Daniel Stefari on the Parade Committee. It is not the Parade Committee, just a little flip-flop there. So just to clarify that. And then also Kyle Kelly will be filling the open seat on the Board of Assessment Appeals till the next election, that's replacing the spot of Bruce, so. Yes, that's right, keeping it all, keeping it all in one spot. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the appointments as presented. Motion by Anne Marie, second by Bob. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstained, cheerful time, motion passes 6-0. Next item, item number 15, which is tax refunds and abatements. So at this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Tax Collector's Report dated February 15, 2019, as presented by Sue Bolin in our Tax Collector's Office. Motion by Anne Marie, second by Bob. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstained, cheerful time, motion passes 6-0. Item number 16 is transfers, we have no transfers before us. Item number 17, the only piece of correspondence is the check registers, which I'm sure everyone saw. Item number 18, public comment. Is there any public comment? Is there any public comments? Hearing no public comment, we'll move on to item number 19, Selectmen's Public Comments.
Yeah, so we continue to hear about things like dog park, or, you know, like a watering hole type place for people to use in the town, and it makes me always wonder what, if anything, we could do with the land up by the dump. We have a lot of land up there that would be, you know, possibly ideal for something like this. I believe it would take some work to, you know, like, create some sort of road in there. That would probably be the biggest hurdle, but there is a bunch of land behind the dump that we could possibly utilize.
Actually, yes, that's something that we've looked at. There were some restrictions on that land, so we're limited to what we could do, but some passive recreation like that, I don't think would be a problem. And there actually is a road. If, if you're going to Andy's Bounce Bar, to give a frame of reference, when you take that right, that fence actually surrounds that, so it literally would just be putting more of a driveway than a road in. So yeah, that's something that we can definitely look...
I think that area for a dog park could be ideal. It's kind of off the beaten path, but it's, you know, green space, you know, it's, people are, for better or worse, know that there's dogs up there, you know, it's in the area of the animal rescue. I think that that could possibly be an idea. I don't, I too do not like the idea of using Sackren's Pond as a dog park, but it's kind of besides the point.
Yeah, no, good question. I mean, that was Peter Barber's responses, where somebody asked a question, and it had been asked of me in passing that the Parks Commission was actually looking at that. If, you know, because Sackren's doesn't have the use that it used to have, would that be a good place to do it? Because we already have the fencing basically in place, so it'd be limited cost, and generally for a dog park, the biggest expense is the fencing. But we had some conversations about, you know, the pond itself and what have you. The place in Southbury that Peter mentioned, that's ONG land, which is basically open on three sides and it leads down to the river, but it's, it's a, it's a massive space, so dogs love going there.
Yeah, I just, I just bring it up because I know Rory and I had talked about it at one point when we were discussing places for like a community garden, and it just seems like it's a underutilized piece of property that the town has that we could possibly use for much better purposes.
Yeah, we've talked about some of the land trust space as well with Alex, and he said, "Listen, if you could find a spot, you guys can basically have it." Then it's just, you know, the infrastructure, but the problem, a lot of that is either wet or wooded, so there'd be some clearing involved. It's more, I'm not saying Sackren is the answer, but I think the town should have a dog park in someplace, it's just a matter of where. So it's kind of an exercise too for parks to see what it's actually going to cost to put something together, so. But no, point well taken.
Alright, thanks.
Well?
Yeah, just similar, similar comment. Sackren's Pond, just so folks know, the reason there's no organized soccer there anymore is because the park is just completely covered in goose droppings, and after bringing my daughter home from a game when she was about six years old, she and all her teammates and all their little kids were just, it was all over the place, it was all over her, I said, "This is, that's enough, we're not using it anymore." It's just unfortunate, there's no simple solution. The geese are a huge problem up there, there's no easy way to get them out of there. You can put in the fake coyotes, you can call in groups, you can put down spray, whatever, it doesn't work. So that, that's why we stopped using it about 10 years ago.
Dogs.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's fine, then use it as a dog park, I don't have an issue with it.
Put a couple Doetmans and some Rottweils, that'll be the end of the geese.
I don't have an issue with it, just do it. But it is an underused...
I do screwballs when we chase them around.
Yeah, I mean, it's an underused space that we have. The grass is always beautifully green, and then the geese come in and abuse it.
No, no.
And sure, you have a basketball hoop up there, kids play, there's a parking lot, there's plenty of room, there's the beautiful pond, there's a little fountain in the pond too, right?
No.
Was there, was it aerated at one point?
The pond, since I have been going there, which is well over 20 years, has been, in my opinion, horribly maintained.
It's just a bog, right?
The grounds, the grounds have been good of late, but the pond, I mean, I could, I would advocate for us to, you know, dredge the pond at some point, but it's, it's horribly under maintained.
So it's not as beautiful as people are describing or remembering?
The park is.
Park, the park is fine. The pond itself needs a lot of work.
The pond needs some work.
And it's sad, the state that it's in, to be honest with you, but that is what it is.
So I think that we should do something with that space, other than just have it sit there and have the geese come and do whatever, and then make a mess and...
Don't disagree. I mean, you know, the other problem too is we cut all the trees down in the front, not all the trees, but we lowered the trees so there was better visibility into the park because there was a lot of vandalism, you know, they lit the playground on fire. We'd go and we'd find the, one of the park benches up on top of the roof, yeah, so. But, you know, the people in that area, they would take a lot of pride in the park.
Yeah, they do.
So.
We used to get letters from them when we first got elected.
Yeah, Joe and Rita, who've now since moved to, I believe they're in North Carolina, it was like their backyard.
Yeah, they loved it.
So.
Alright, that was it.
Thank you, well. Anne Marie?
I agree with the, with the owners and now about dark block and Sackren's not being the right place for it and beautifying that.
Look at the board in complete harmony.
Yeah, look at that.
Bipartisan.
But there was some talk about some conservation trails, saw it on one of the Facebook things. They're asking who is maintaining the trails for the conservation. I don't know if you want to call them the parks, but trails that are marked off, you know, the Keith Mitchell Trail, and then there's another one, it's a green sign, and it says, you know, conservation area, but they said there used to be walking trails there, they're no longer maintained, they're overgrown.
Where's this again in the...
One of my, the one that comes to mind is the Keith Mitchell over by the Rotary, there's one over by Great Hill, it's off, it's not Laurel, I don't know.
Laurel ledge?
Not Laurel ledge.
Laurel line. That's where Peter's talking about.
I think it's off of Chukta Road.
Off of Chukta?
It's on Chukta's Road, there's a green sign, conservation area, da-da-da-da, it's a green sign. Yeah, I see these signs throughout, and there was just one saying, "How come these aren't maintained, there's supposed to be trails, there's walking trails." I don't really think there are supposed to be walking trails, I just think that there are areas where it's a conservation, where there are birds there, and they don't want to disrupt it, so it's not used to, you know, plow down and put a house, or plow down to use your dirt bikes in.
Sure.
It's just an area, it's a green area.
It's like a preserve.
Right, like a preservation. But someone said that there's supposed to be trails on one of them that are not maintained, and we were supposed to have our Board of Public Works meeting on Monday, I was gonna ask about it, but then we had a snowstorm, and I was gonna ask Parks and Recs, and someone thought that maybe it was the land trust thing, but no, land trust just has the building. So just maybe to get a definitive answer on who is in charge of this area, you know, is it something that Public Works is supposed to maintain? Is it just a conservation area where the animals run free and be happy and play? You know?
I don't know. We'll have to look into that. I know that the land trust maintains the trails over in Gary, uh, Gary Park, in Chaffield Park.
Right, that I know.
And, you know, while they have all of the land that is that conservation land, for them to maintain whatever trails are in there, I think would be a massive undertaking that I'm not sure that they even have, remotely have the capability to do.
Correct.
I know it's sometimes for them, it's hard just to take care of the Chaffield Park trails. I mean, we can certainly look into it, but then you would get the people that say, "Well, I don't want it disturbed, I don't want trees taken down, I don't want stuff cleared because that takes away..."
Absolutely.
You know, blah, blah, blah. And if people aren't walking and using it...
Maybe you can just know what they are there for.
Well, I'd like to find out specifically what they're talking about, because we've had conversations in Rich and Rory with Oxford, because there is a project, Oxford High School, they have trails that come down from the high school down towards Keith Mitchell Forest by the reservoir, and they want to extend those onto Seymour land, all around the dam and everything else.
Yeah.
But that kind of died a little bit on the vibe.
The fitness trails.
Yeah, I'm not even aware of where those would be, so. I mean, that's something we could definitely look into, so if you just pop off a...
There are a lot of areas that the land trust was, and I'm not saying they were, it's kind of getting lost with the, unfortunately, the death of a lot of the old timers, who, they used to have a lot of volunteers, and they would go out and do these things because they had a lot of volunteers, so they would go where they had the properties and do these trails. And I don't know where you're speaking, I know where you're speaking to, I don't, I'm not saying that's one of them, but it is quite possible. And as a lot of the old timers have, have left, the land trust don't have the ability to do those things anymore, have passed away, they don't have the number of volunteers they used to. So to Kurt's point, if it is them, and I suspect it might be something that an old timer did long ago, they don't have that manpower to, to keep them up anymore.
Right. Rory, can you make a note, we'll try to figure out what, where the person's talking about specifically and see what we can... And I don't know how...
And even the land trust has found a lot of those first fell projects that don't do something, and it's been years of...
Yeah, what, too, I don't know how comfortable I am putting...
And that's fine, it's just as long as...
Just Public Works guys and equipment in the woods. You know what I mean?
No, I don't, I don't...
I don't think she's saying we should do it.
No, 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 I'm not, but I'm just, I'm just saying, I don't, wouldn't be comfortable.
I wouldn't be comfortable.
If they had been doing it in the past, I'm not sure I would be comfortable sending them really back in.
Just as long as we, you know, these are the areas and this is what this is for, even if we put it on the website, yeah, these are our conservation areas, you know, because...
Right. Maybe the boys go up and want to do it again.
Yeah.
Hey, you got more?
One more thing, I'm sorry. Sorry. Just a reminder, we do have, I know it's kind of among my environmental stuff, I'm sorry, the upcoming weeks is, the next four to six weeks, maybe even eight weeks, is the coyote mating season. Just please watch out for your animals, even like your labradors, the coyotes will lure your dogs, no matter how big they are, out, and, you know, they'll attack them. It's just, it's, they are, they're going into heat, so you know, I don't have to explain that to you. Shut up, Millie.
We got time, Anne Marie, it's early.
Yeah.
No.
Well, we, listen, we get to nine o'clock, we go to the PG 13 part of the meeting, so you could explain it.
So just, you know, be careful of even your kids, your animals outside, that's all I have.
Thank you for that. Rory, can you get something up on the website? Yes, please, if you can. Yeah, if you can just get a whole page out there. That's right. We get those programmed in the schools.
Will thank me. I appreciate it, Anne Marie. Thank you. Because I didn't know that. Yeah, well, you know, you know, people hear that, the Fisher cats making noise, ain't nothing, it's a year coyotes.
Wait till you hear a fox.
I live in the city, I live in the city part of Seymour, so I'm okay.
We have it right up next to us.
Yeah.
We woke up in the other morning, looking at me.
We woke up in the middle of the night thinking somebody was getting murdered.
It was a crazy...
It was a fox, unbelievable.
There's our meeting. Thankfully, we've passed the hour, so this part won't be on TV. So, thank you, Anne Marie.
No, just one more comment about the dog park, you know, if we are considering a dog park somewhere, the one thing that's important, that, you know, they did mention that, it was already leaked that Sackren Park was an option.
Well, that wasn't me responding on Facebook.
Okay, so that's where it came from?
Yeah.
Just curious.
The person asked me a question, but I just kind of responded.
Because I think that has to be in consideration of where we put it, out, away from residential areas, like most, you know, towns that do have them, they are away from homes and places where they'll...
Right, so the dogs aren't barking all day, and they have a picnic, they can go in the backyard, the dogs aren't barking all day.
Plenty of places that we could put it that are removed from homes.
There's a lot of places, and I love Peter Barber, don't get me wrong, but there's a lot of houses by the community center as well.
Yeah, no, I'm not saying they're either, I mean, I like the dump, you know, in that area, that might be an area, someplace which were moved from...
No, I agree. Yeah, because the one in Southbury is literally in the middle of nowhere.
Yes.
Yeah.
So one in Shelton's kind of out in the middle of nowhere too, so.
Thank you, Bob. Trish has nothing. Well, well, slow down, Tiger. Now I'm gonna think of something. Rory, is there anything we missed? Yeah? If you go upstairs, if you go upstairs and get your notepad, I'd like to just go through a few things.
The file has delay written on it, and permanent marker.
Rich, anything? Clay, anything you'd like to just throw out there, just, just 'cause? No? Hi? We don't know who you are, could you introduce yourself? Excellent. No, you may have full access.
What a treat you had tonight.
What a treat.
So we got that going for us. Yeah, this, yeah.
We're evenly amused.
Yeah. So.
Nice.
Alright, so with that, I'll...
I'll make a motion, Jerry.
Motion by Anne Marie, second by Bob. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Mark the meeting closed at 8:46 PM.